We're going to have a public hearing first. We have zoning resolution to go over first. Up first is zoning zero nine twenty-five zero one Zulu, request to rezone map to zero nine four across zero two seven dot oh three from A two to R one. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to that? Owners of the property.
The surveyor that applied for the rezon forms, his mother passed away earlier today, so he can be here. So I told him I'll have to speak on his behalf if that's okay.
Yep.
This is a rezone as you get down towards Camp Buck Palms in the Rockwood area. It is contiguous to other R one areas. We only have one phone call about it. Nobody showed up with me to contest it. And the recommendation from the planning commission was a full recommendation to man it into the project.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other comment on the zoning? All right, the hearing done, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and go into the county committee.
All rise. Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye. This honorable commissioner's meeting of Rome County, Tennessee is now in session. Your honorable chairman Shannon Hester presiding. God bless the United States, the great state of Tennessee in this honorable meeting. This time Pastor Randy Griffiths will introduce in prayer afterwards. Please remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
Our Father, we're grateful today for the blessing to be able to be a part of the great county. We thank the Lord for the commission. We ask him to bless them. Ask the delegate tonight over the businesses that need to be taken care of. I pray that you would always allow them to remember every citizen of this county, young as well as those that are retired and even the middle aged. And what we pray that every decision they make will be able to better each citizen of this county. We also want to thank you today for the good grace of God, the grace of God that brings salvation that appears to all men. And what we praise you today for such a beautiful day that you've given us a day that we can be blessed and give glory to the Lord in. And Father, we also want to thank you for the health that we have tonight. And we pray for those around us that may be battling some issues in their life, whether it be physically, spiritually, mentally, or just pray that you'd meet every need. We thank you for each one that has a part here tonight. And I pray that you would bless and just honor every one that your name would be honored in all that's done. For these things, we give you praise and glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
My pleasure, ladies.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence your cell phones.
All right, roll's been called by Tom. Thank you. And if you'll notice, we've got new tablets up here and a new software, all new, so just be advised. Taking motion to approve the minutes of the August eleventh, twenty twenty-five commission meeting. Motion by Duff, second by Hooks. Commissioner Duff.
Nothing.
Commissioner Hooks.
Nothing further.
Any comment? Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right. Majority pass. Motion to accept the committee reports and correspondence. Motion by Berry, second by Duff. Commissioner Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On report number one, I just wanted to say on the basis of the short-term rental committees, we've been working together on the, on the short-term rentals. And Ms. Wilson has got us in great shape. Our county officials are all on the same page now, working toward that. We should be, we should be seeing some outstanding results from additional revenue that we think is gonna, is gonna be, is gonna be very helpful to us. On number, on number five, in that report, I guess it's projected on the status of carbon rivers. I know they've been accumulating in a lot of, a lot of Windville parks and stuff out there.
Yeah, latest photography shows, people in our neighborhood keep up with that pretty closely and some others in the city of Oak Ridge. As far as the status of the property goes, no change at all. There is some indication that their footprint of the actual number of lays has maybe decreased some. I don't have any numbers to verify that. But all in all, no, no change in status.
It's the state involved at all?
Yes, they are in constant contact with T-DAC. And we've worked with T-DAC to try to push them to be a little more aggressive, a lot more aggressive, actually. But T-DAC is involved there.
Thank you. Number seven, on the, on that one, I guess, there it is. Let's go for on, on, there was an ordinance or a motion on the long-term use. I think Mr. Parkins has made a motion, but it failed. So that's, that's just coming out of the planning commission, right?
You will see one on the density for when we get it straightened out.
That's the one that was due, something over this motion and it failed.
The, the one for the density actually went through. It's something that we'll have to bring back later at a later date, possibly get it straightened out.
Mr. Berry, I think what you're referring to is a motion that was made in planning commission regarding minimum lot size that did not pass planning commission at the time.
Okay, really, I don't think it really said anything about the minimum lot size, but it was, it was about that same. So that's.
It's all tied together, I'm sure.
Yes, yes. Thank you. And number twelve, I just want to thank the Rome County Anti-Drug Coalition and opioid abatement council for the forty-eight percent decrease in overdose from twenty-three to twenty-four. Obviously, they're doing great things and have, have, have money to work with to continue to do those kinds of things.
Yes, Sarah Harrison is our, who's the executive director of Anti-Drug Coalition, is also the chair of the opioid council this year. The opioid council continues to do incredible work. You all have a resolution before you on operating expenses as a recommendation of some of that spending. But also, too, there's gonna be, I've asked the community navigator, the covenant health employee that's the navigator, peer recovery specialist, I believe, and then the schools employee, the trauma-informed specialist, to come to you in November and give a presentation on the results of their work over the past year. So for that, coming at the November meeting. And I say most of the opioid council will be here that night. Commissioner Lehman and Commissioner Cunningham are instrumental pieces of that council as well.
Good, very good. Thank you. And also congratulations to the sheriff and his staff for obtaining certification on the, that's a great thing. Always looking for that. And also thanks to budget director for the recommendation of a good budget that they, that's all I have to share.
Commissioner Duff.
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion, period fifteen. All right, list of notaries. Is that the last one down there at the bottom?
Okay, thank you. Motion by Henderson, second by Hooks. Commissioner Henderson.
Appreciate your willingness, sir.
Commissioner Hooks.
All that goes.
Any discussion, any debate? Madam Clerk. All right, this time we're going, hearing for the delegations. I do remind you that your comments and content must remain under three minutes, and it must be remain to the county's business. Anyone want to address the county's meeting?
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. It's good to see everybody under the best of snow. I'm the president and CEO of the Rome Alliance. Everybody should have in their pocket a copy of the August two thousand twenty-five Rome Alliance president's report. Like I've always said, it's a great snapshot of everything that's going on and all that can be going on during the Rome Alliance. Couple highlights I want to point out, ACD, Cobalt boats, if you look into their second door, going preparing to fire two additional parcels of land, totally seventeen and thirty-five acres within the Rome regional industrial park to accommodate their future growth and expansion plans. And I can tell you that we closed on those two pieces of property last Thursday, September fourth. So it's been a process of about twelve to eighteen months to get across the finish line. But it's good that they have two additional pieces of property because we want our businesses to be able to grow and expand out here in Rome County. If you flip over to tourism. I'm gonna brag on Stacy for a little bit here. Stacy, each year she travels to Lebanon, Tennessee to set up for the Tennessee State Fair. So she went over this year on August sixth. State Fair is at Travel Tennessee Building, and this year around August fourteenth to twenty-third. And Stacy sets up a great exhibit for Rome County each and every year. All ninety-five counties have this exhibit. And I know it's just a matter of time till we won. But if you flip over the second page of tourism, Rome County won first place this year at the Tennessee State Fair. You can see a picture of the exhibit in your, in your packet. As far as Rome Chamber, I'll mention a couple other things. The Taste of the Holidays this year will be on Saturday November the twenty-second. This is an event that's organized by the Rome Chamber. We did this event for the first time two years ago, and we rotate between cities. So two years ago, it was the Herman Lectures at Kingston. This year will be at Rockwood. This will be a free family event to bring in the holiday spirit with vendors, food trucks, stand-up pictures, and live performance. You should be getting an invite within the next few days, sometime this week or next week. The elected officials annual picnic barbecue this year will be on October the twenty-first, which is a Tuesday. And this year, that will be held at the Rome County Park. So look for an invite for that. That event will be on the twenty-first, and it'll go from five to seven. That concludes my report, and I'll answer any questions that y'all might have. I've got one.
How much property do we have left in that industrial park?
One bunch.
I know it's about gone.
There's a couple of seven, fifteen to twenty tracts of land that been culled off at Sam Rapier. And then we're partnering with Bud Slade and on a couple of other large tracts that honestly, if we didn't partner with a developer, they would just sit there. So Bud's office is under contract. And so if we can get to the closing table with him, he's looking to have at that property for a couple of years, haul some dirt out. And then the end piece, we're hoping to get a couple more developable paths in a couple of years. So, but to answer your question, David, there's not much property left. Mike, any, any other questions?
So I guess on the other side of that, you know, we don't have much left while we're working on the campaign tomorrow.
Those conversations. Any other questions?
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next.
Good evening. Dennis Walsh, Rockwood. Tonight, I'm representing Rome for Liberty. I'd just like to, it's really a question. It's how can I obtain a copy of the Rome County ten-year strategic development plan?
On the website.
It's on the website?
The Rome TN dot go, RomeCountyTN dot go, about halfway down the page, right there.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, next.
Anybody else? Okay. I'm Rocky Houston. I'm a whistleblower. I'm no threat to nobody. Everybody agree? I'm unarmed. I'm disabled. I'm a disabled man. I'm here, I've done high staff for these current commissions. Now, I hope that you're dependent in a conspiracy case, Shannon. Do you realize that? Okay, okay. Conspiracy, conspiracy. A law, a, a federal witness. I'm, I'm no danger. I'm going straight to my truck and to my action. All right. God bless America.
Good job, sir.
All right. Anyone else want to address the county's mission? All right, hearing done, seeing none, we'll move to the county attorney to follow that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two things. As you see in correspondence eleven, the county has completed the purchase of the Browner property for the parking lot, so that is all done. On the Broken Arrow Point tree case, the owner of the property has contacted me about a meeting on his property to discuss his trees. Dennis Ferguson and I have a meeting with him on Thursday morning, so I'll let you know what happens there. And I have held off on hiring an arborist until we find out whether something can be worked out. That is my report. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
We'll move to the county executive report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I feel like it's your rundown in front of you. I hit a few points. First of all, I hit the very first one. I'm not gonna read to you, but I just want to say, last Thursday, several of you were able to attend. Governor Lee was in town and announced the location of Oaklow to do small modular nuclear reactor manufacturing and fuel processing and recycling. One point six eight billion dollar investment, eight hundred and twelve jobs in Rome County. This represents the third largest capital investment in state history and the largest jobs announcement in Rome County history. And I just want to say, this is such a, an important piece of the nuclear renaissance. As you heard, if you were there, again, thank you to those, I know some of you weren't able to come. Weather was a huge issue that day. And so I know somebody weren't able to come. But the theme, there are a couple of themes that I wanted to share with you guys so everybody here understood what this was about. Number one, this, this project was a direct result of the executive orders written by President Trump on May twenty-third. In fact, the president, who was there to announce the project, was standing by President Trump in the Oval Office when he wrote these executive orders. Had those executive orders not been written, this project has not located in Rome County on Thursday. So just understand, this is part of a national security initiative as much as it is anything. So this is bigger than us. So I wanted y'all to know that first and foremost. And the second thing is, the second theme that came out of this was the fact that this also doesn't happen without the unity that is present throughout the Oak Ridge corridor. And the unity that is present throughout the Oak Ridge corridor mean both counties and the city and all of our stakeholders in between, that doesn't happen without this body jointly approving a resolution to do economic development in partnership with Anderson County and Oak Ridge City. Because you all did that and supported that, we now have the momentum and the alignment it requires to be able to recruit projects like this. So I want you to understand how important you are, the role you played in helping us get here, and we're not done yet. There are more coming, and you'll hear about more coming soon. So I wanted you all to understand that and how important your work has been in economic development. You return to the second page of the report. On August twenty-fifth, I was proud to name Melinda Farrell as the permanent full-time director of Solid Waster Cycling. She's done a great job in here in Rome, got high expectations for her. So please congratulate Melinda. This is a little bit of a strange one. But Petsafe recently donated, this is a true number, twenty-six pallets, full pallets of kitty litter. We estimate this is five years' worth of kitty litter to the Rome County Animal Shelter. We, we have kitty litter coming out of our ears at the animal shelter, but we're not going to have to buy any for a long time. So, so we, that was a great development that's gonna save us quite a bit of money.
It's good for us, too.
And a couple of the good, good bits of news, the Oak Ridge, the natural resources damages assessment that y'all heard us talk about, the grants we applied for for Candy Creek, or not, for Riley Creek Campground and for Poplar Creek Kayak Launch. We, we were awarded both of those grants. That means we're gonna be able to invest about somewhere between three point seven, four million dollars at Riley Creek Campground. And then we're able to build a brand-new kayak launch in Commissioner Gann's district, right beside the Dollar General, right next to it in Poplar Creek. So that was great news that we were able to win those grants. And the final thing is that immediately following this meeting, our brand-new fire truck is gonna be parked right in front of the courthouse. This is the grant that we got, the CDBG grant. So I'd love for us to have a group picture when we're done with the meeting, out in front of the brand-new fire truck in front of the courthouse. So that concludes my report. Commissioner, or, I'd like to ask you any questions.
Any questions?
If the bus garage runs low, the old drought, like how we just flagged it to.
Kitty litter, exactly right.
Yeah, we had the old disaster.
Well, you know where we go, that's right.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Berry.
Yes, Mr. President. You know what the status of our building on the sheriff's?
Yeah, we're pushing. Lynn, what's, what's the latest? We were gonna go, remind me, we just talked about this on Thursday.
Talked about the storage building. So got with Lynn, got with some vendors through Sourcewell. And out of the three vendors that she supplied me with, only one of the vendors has the ability to do what we're actually looking for because we're gonna actually get it, get it put up. So we're getting details of the plan situated because you don't have to bid the, the stuff out on Sourcewell, and it makes it a lot easier.
Any idea how long it's taken, Doc? Time, time, time of the essence.
Yeah, we're at, we're at the mercy of, you know, we're wanting to do it right the first time. We're at the mercy of the company that's putting the plans together and everything. And we're gonna, we're gonna work on it as soon as, as soon as we hit the, the kind of year.
We're pushing. I, I communicate with Mr. Lowden, letting him know where our intentions were. So we're on track. We'll keep pushing, get, get it done on time before we have to think about the lease.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for the county executives? Hearing done, seeing none, we'll go to special orders. Special order number one, acceptance of President Shane Best as Rome County school president, second district. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Ferguson, Commissioner Henderson.
Appreciate the job he's done on the board so far, and wish him the best in his future endeavors.
Commissioner Ferguson?
I agree with you, Junior. Shane done a good job. He just had to resign before his time was up, but I think he done a great job while he was on there.
All right. Any discussion, any debate? Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion, period fifteen. Confirmation of appointment of Sharon Shadwick to the Rome County Public Utility Board. Motion by Commissioner Berry, second by Commissioner Gann. Commissioner Berry.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think we could have probably gotten anyone with any, with any more credentials than, than, than she has to, to do that job. And it looks like she's a perfect fit. Of course, we're lucky to, lucky to have someone in our county with, with, with those credentials to fill that spot, looking, looking for a position that work for us.
All right. Commissioner Gann?
Agree with Mr. Berry, sir.
All right. Any discussion, any debate? Madam Clerk. Motion, period fifteen. All right, we're moving to the zoning resolution that we discussed in a public hearing. And this is coming from the planning commission. So this is resolution zero nine twenty-five zero one Zulu. Motion by Berry, second by Duff. Commissioner Berry.
Yes, sir. Just, just happened to be in my district, and, and I think the planning commission has recommended it. And so I would, I'm sorry to ask us to go with a planning commission. And I think if you can ask, go if you've got anything else to add. If not, we're ready. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Duff?
No, I'd go with the planning commission's recommendation.
All right. Any discussion, any debate? Madam Clerk. Motion, period fifteen. All right, there's no old business going to new business. First resolution, resolution zero nine twenty-five zero one, resolution electing chairman for the Rome County Commission and sitting compensation for chairman. Motion by Brackett, second by Parks. Commissioner Brackett.
Guess it's been time to make the recommendations, correct?
That is, that is correct.
I'd like to nominate Shane Hester for chairman.
And then I'll get the second for the resolution, Commissioner Parks?
We'll give him the second. We're just, we're just making the motions.
Well, I'm getting the motion on, on there, but I'm fixing to gather any other names. Commissioner Parks.
No, not funny.
All right. Any, any other nominees for chairman?
Moving nominations to be closed, chairman.
So move? All right. So we'll vote at this time for Shannon Hester for chairman. Yes vote would be. Motion, period fifteen. Thank you all. I really appreciate it. It's an honor to serve. All right, next, resolution zero nine twenty-five zero two, resolution electing the chairman pro temp for the Rome County Commissioners and sitting compensation for chairman pro temp. Motion by Brackett, second by Henderson. Commissioner Brackett.
I'd like to nominate Ben Gann for vice chair.
Commissioner Henderson.
I'll go with that, second that.
All right. Any, any other nominees?
Moving nominations to be closed.
So move? All right, Madam Clerk. Motion, period fifteen.
Thank you all. Try not to talk, actually.
Congratulations.
Just like, I have a speech. Nice vote coming on here a little bit.
Moving on, resolution zero nine twenty-five zero two, three, setting the end date of the Rome County legislative body. Motion by, motion by Duff, second by Gann. And you can look in your packets for the dates and stuff. Commissioner Duff.
I have nothing further.
And question was raised earlier that fall break is next month. On that Monday, it's also Columbus Day, federal holiday. So by resolution, our commission meeting will be moved to not fall on that holiday. Second by Commissioner Gann.
He does the second.
Any discussion, any debate?
Ready, chairman?
Chair, ready, Mr. Hooks?
Is this where we would entertain a, a mimic that we would not set any meetings on Wednesday due to our?
So this, this would, this would be part of, but this resolution may be confined to just the monthly meeting.
That resolution would be what he's after.
Yeah. The zero four.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ferguson?
No, no, I just, my thing fell apart.
Is there no other discussion or debate? All right, motion, period fifteen. Resolution zero nine twenty-five zero four, adopting the rules of procedure for the Rome County Board of Commissioners. Motion by. Motion by Parks, second by Henderson. Commissioner Parks.
Nothing further.
Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Mr. Hook?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to entertain that we amend this to not have any committee meetings, nor would we set a commission meeting on Wednesday nights. The churches in our county, most all of them have turked on Wednesday nights. They may or may not be a whole lot. If we need to, if we move it for fall break, meetings for fall break, then we ought to recognize our churches and not set any meetings on their meeting nights.
I second that.
All right, I'm looking, I'm looking through here now. So we'd have to, as chairman, I'll accept a friendly amendment to this resolution, oh four, that we will assist and try to. So now we've got to vote on the amendment. So if you vote on that, you'll be voting not to schedule a meeting on Wednesday night for subcommittees. So make sure you know what we're asking.
So that would be number seven on the resolution base. We'd just be adding number seven on the resolution.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's any meeting, not just commission, but committees, subcommittees.
All right, Amber, let me know when you're, when you can.
Okay.
All right, a yes vote would be to remove Wednesday from the subcommittee meetings. Motion, period fifteen. That's to amend, and now we have to vote on the resolution, right?
Yes.
All right, so if you would, Amber, redial that up back up.
Let's just ignore this, this note.
Okay. So this is a resolution zero nine twenty-five zero four, as amended. So motion by, or. or, I'm sorry, we don't need a motion because it's already on the table. Uh, so all those in favor say aye.
The planning commission is on Wednesday nights, but is that one of our committees or is that, that's a separate committee?
That's, that's set up under a separate statute.
Except for, thanks for the, just to make sure.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we're not in control of the ones that we have. Not all of them there, if you missed it, so, uh, so once again, let's make sure, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. All right, motion carries. All right, the next one, uh, is zero nine twenty-five oh five, uh, this is, uh, in the county commission for Rome County, a resolution electing, uh, committee on committees. And I have that, uh, here in front of me. So as, as you know, I've tried to be fair in the morning, Doug, but let me go ahead and get the, uh, motion by Brackett, a second by, Junior Henderson. Commissioner Brackett? Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Nothing further.
All right, here's the twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, sub, uh, committee on committees. Uh, and you know, I try to rotate that each and every year. So Commissioner Brackett, Commissioner Berry, Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Hester, and Commissioner Doug. And currently we have thirty-five subcommittees. Uh, and if you do the math on that with fifteen commissioners, that's a hundred fif, a hundred and seventy-five targets with fifteen shooters. It should be less than twelve meetings per, uh, commissioner. So. All right, motion and a second, it's on the floor. Any discussion, any debate? Michigan Berry?
Mr. Chairman, do we need to put in there, this says that they meet for twelve months, do we need to put in there that it's from January? I think those committees are effective January to December?
Yeah, I mean, well, so like in the past, if you remember, we amended, uh, a meeting, or actually dissolved one, so we had to, uh, have the committee on committees come back and went on.
Well, what I'm saying though, is our, the committees that they come up with are effective in January.
Yes, sir.
So this says twelve months, which would be tonight, so don't we need to specify from January to December?
So we'll, we can amend that to say that.
Right.
And we'll accept that as a friendly amendment. Good catch.
I, I have a question to speak, but, uh, that is not correct. It's when the committee on committees brings it back to the commission, and then the next meet, that's, that's when it would take effect, when we pass those committee assignments.
January.
It's not January, it would, it would be October.
I know, but I thought.
So it would take effect as soon as, as soon as the commission passes.
I just thought the committee, the new committees took over in, in January.
It's the only one that January to budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Yeah, so no amendment needed. Thanks, Commissioner Doug. But the committee on committee serves for twelve months, or serves on next, uh, September's meeting. So we've had to go back to that as well. All right, any other discussion, any other debate? All right, Madam Clerk.
We lost the, we lost the.
I did get a motion and seconded it. Yeah.
We do now.
Keep me on it. I did turn four. All right, motion carries fifteen. All right.
Mr. Chairman, will you tell us who's on that?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Brackett, Commissioner Berry, Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Hester, and Commissioner Doug. All right, Resolution zero nine twenty-five zero six, uh, resolution authorizing the county attorney to file lawsuit regarding the properties as listed in the attached case request form. Motion by, motion by Commissioner Parks and Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Parks?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Henderson?
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Motion carries fourteen. All right, uh, Resolution zero nine twenty-five oh seven, a resolution authorizing, okay, that's the one we just did. County attorney to file lawsuit regarding the properties, uh, as listed on the attached case. Motion by Henderson, second by Gann. Commissioner Henderson?
Nothing further, sir.
Commissioner Gann?
Nothing, sir.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries. Resolution zero nine twenty-five oh eight, resolution, uh, of the Rome County Commission to approve a multi-year agreement with Citytail Coin Company and CTC for inmate communication services. Motion by, motion by Hook, second by Kirby. Commissioner, uh, Hooks?
I have nothing to, uh, if you have any comments on, let me text it.
We've been with them since before I've been here, and I've been here almost ten years.
Nothing further.
Mr. Kirby?
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Madam Clerk. Motion carries fifteen. Resolution zero nine twenty-five oh nine, a resolution to reflect changes in revenue and expenditures in the general fund for the Tennessee law enforcement hiring training. Motion by Wilson, second by Parks. Commissioner Wilson?
I have nothing further. It's under budget, state money for retention for full-time officers.
Commissioner Parks?
Nothing.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Fifteen. Resolution zero nine twenty-five ten, a resolution to amend the revenue expenditures in the one oh one general fund for the local health service grant for the Rome County Health Department grant for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Motion by, motion by Commissioner Doug, second by Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Doug?
This grant money, nothing further.
Commissioner Wilson?
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none? Motion carries fifteen. Resolution zero nine twenty-five eleven, a resolution to reflect changes in expenditures for the opioid settlement fund one twenty-seven for twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. Motion by, motion by Cunningham, second by Kirby. Commissioner Cunningham?
I have nothing further.
Commissioner Kirby? All right, any discussion, any debate? Madam Clerk. Resolution zero nine twenty-five twelve, a resolution authorizing Rome County to participate in the national opioid settlement with eight secondary, uh, opioids manufacturers. Motion by Cunningham, a second by Hamilton. Commissioner Cunningham?
The opioid B is doing a great job and got a long way to go.
Doctor Hamilton?
Yes, sir.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Madam Clerk. All right, fifteens. Resolution zero nine twenty-five thirteen, a resolution to amend the general capital fund one seventy-one to ensure accurate appropriations for twenty-five, twenty-six. Motion by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Parks. Commissioner Wilson?
Want to clean up for the general capital projects fund one seventy-one.
Commissioner Parks?
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Madam Clerk. Motion carries fifteen. Resolution to amend the revenue expenditures in the two oh four wastewater treatment fund to reflect the assessment management plan, uh, grant for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Doug. Commissioner Henderson?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Doug?
Uh, this was money that was actually budgeted last year and that wasn't spent, so it was rebudgeted this year.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Madam Clerk. Fifteen. Resolution to revise, uh, employee and county contributions to the Rome County Employee Health Insurance Plan. Motion by Commissioner Doug, second by Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Doug?
Uh, yes, this, uh, appreciate the hard work that Jennifer Suter put in to this, uh, but this has updated our, uh, health insurance plans and made some cheaper. Uh, there are still free options for under the standard plan if you just want single only. Uh, but if, we had a seven point seven percent increase in that this year, uh, but what is, what had happened, the way that it was set up, all of the copays were the same no matter which plan you were on, so the only person that was really happy with that is it kind of, all the employees started using the, the premier plan. Uh, so the employee, or the, uh, insurance companies were loving that, but this, uh, this makes some adjustments and the, the plans that, that are below that are actually less than, than what they have been previous. So, uh, um, if you want to be the premier, there's just a little bit of a, of a copay that would just be on the, uh, employee side. Also, the percentages have been set, so in the future, as increases occur, it will automatically set a new insurance rate for all the employee plans based on what, where they are at this, this year. I appreciate all the hard work Jennifer put into that.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, nothing further, thank you, Jennifer.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I missed you there.
You're going real fast with this so many.
I'll slow it down.
When are those percentages, when they impose?
Next to far out come, or next to far out come. They're all under twenty, but the bottom three.
Commissioner Hooks, on the CDHP plan, there's actually a thousand dollar contribution that the county will make for employees that go on that, that plan. And that is one that is really not being used by any other employees in Rome County, but, uh, we can sympathize that the thousand dollars will be, will be paid for that.
Does that only affect the employees and not the family?
Um, it's got, there's different rates depending on, you've got employee only rates, you've got employee plus child, you've got employee plus spouse, employee plus family. And there are different copays for each of those, four, four different plans that are available. You've got premier, standard, limited, actually there's five.
Uh, CDHP and the premier, the, uh, the Hester premier. So I guess we're not doing, we're not doing like forty-five or fifty and ninety-five.
Can I, can I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Chair, nothing further.
Essentially, uh, Mr. Hooks, your premier PPO is going to go up thirty dollars. Your standard PPO, and that's for all, all of them, employee, employee only, employee plus child, employee plus spouse, employee plus family. They're all going to go up thirty dollars. The standard PPO across all four stays the same. They don't, it don't change. The limited PPO, it comes down fifty dollars. So if they were paying zero for employee only, they still pay zero. Uh, employee plus child, it used to be two hundreds, now one fifty. Uh, employee plus spouse, used to be two fifties, now two hundred. Employee plus family, used to be three fifties, now three hundred. Like, that's the same as a CDHP. Plus they get a thousand dollars put in HSA if they want it, which they don't, don't get right now. And then the, um, the premier PPO, OA dash P, whatever, that really hit off the home. It went up thirty dollars off. The only ones that went up seeing an increase are the premier and, uh, the bottom, the premier, whatever.
The other plus.
Yeah, premier plus. The other, the standard seen no change, the limited and the CDHP both seen a decrease in their premium. I think that pretty much.
I'll get that right. Clarify, just, Mr. Chairman, so, uh, to, what, what the budget committee wanted to accomplish here was, was really a couple of different things. One, the way we had our caps written in for what most employees could pay was by dollar amount. So if we get a big adjustment from our insurance company, you know, we were having to come back and look at that every year. Now we're asking the commission to approve percentages that will stay the same no matter what the adjustments come year to year, so they don't have to look at it again. Uh, so that, so you're voting on those percentages first and foremost. The second thing is there was no disincentive for every employee to go to the most expensive plan. So a new employee comes in, they're going to the premier PPO. To show that this works, Jennifer's hasn't been working with employees who are being hired right now, and they've been kind of waiting to see what this commission's going to do. And since we've kind of settled on this plan that's coming for you tonight, five of the nine have gone to the basic plan because it stayed. So it proves that this plan is going to work where people aren't going to go to the most expensive option first. And that will, it's good for them because that's all the coverage they need, and it's good for the county because we're not paying extra for over insured people. Does that make sense? And the net impact on employees is if you want it, like, I'm, I'm going to keep mine, so I'll pay thirty extra dollars a month. If I didn't want to pay that thirty extra, I could drop back to the basic and stay the same. If I wanted to save money, I could drop to the limited and pay fifty dollars or less for a month. So there's options. The HSA option is a great one. We've always had the HSA capability, but nobody ever did it because the county never contributed to it. So in this plan, the county's going to contribute a thousand dollars to it. So if you're young, single, that's not planning on going to the doctor anytime soon, the county will put a thousand dollars in there that gets invested. And you don't go to the doctor for five or ten years, you end up with a pretty good nest egg there that's invested. So, so you got options here that we didn't have before. The work that this budget committee did was, was exceptional, working, Jennifer's work she did and was unbelievable. Uh, but I'm really proud of the work that the committee did to bring this product to you. I think it's great for employees and it's really good for the county.
Chair recognizes.
Some of them, they only get the thousand dollars if they do the CDHP.
Correct, correct.
Can you explain exactly what that is?
Yeah, so it's a high deductible plan. So, you know, if you, if you do get sick, your deductible's going to be really high. So if you have health problems, this isn't the plan for you. But it also comes with an HSA health savings account that you can use the money that's in that account for a lot, I mean, it's a pretty broad list of things you can use in healthcare expenses. Mainly it's meant for your, to pay your copays, to pay any, any bills that you get, but it can pay for medicines, it can pay for, you know, crutches or a scooter, for example, that Commissioner Wilson, uh, just purchased recently. Uh, but, but it gives you that option. And if you're falling that category, you don't think it's going to go to the doctor a lot, that's the option for you that, that, until the county started contributing to that, it really wasn't incentive to do it.
All right, any other questions or debate on it? I apologize for, uh, moving too fast. All right. If you hadn't voted, go ahead and do so at this time. All right, motion carries fifteen. All right, our last resolution for tonight is zero nine twenty-five sixteen, a resolution of the Rome County Commission authorizing the Rome County Executive to execute a memorandum of agreement between Rome County Government and the Rome County Curried Commissions. Uh, motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Hamilton. Commissioner Henderson?
I have nothing further.
Doctor Hamilton?
Yes, sir.
All right, any, uh, discussion, any debate? Madam Clerk. Motion carries fifteen. If there's no other business before the county commission, I'll entertain a motion to the chair.
Motion.
Second, and meet up front. All those in favor say aye?